Yeah, if you don't hit me in the head with your chair. There's a chair.
Okay, we'll reopen the meeting. Thank you for being patient with us. We had an executive session. I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting, first notify me as the chair, and then I will inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Okay, don't worry about that. The bowl, please.
So this first one is from Anna Lees at North Falmouth Elementary. "I can show my learning by doing good on tests." The next one is from Kayen at Lawrence School. "Our PTO helps us by answering questions, helping seventh graders find their way to class." And then from the high school, Doug at the high school. "My school inspires me to come to school every day and learn." Right to the point. That could be a good mission statement.
Steve, you gonna record or anything?
It will be yes.
Okay, thank you. The mission statement, I'll reflect on that. "The mission of the Falmouth Public Schools is to educate students so that they are engaged in their education in a way which develops their capacity to pursue their goals and foster lifelong learning. The three core beliefs which define us as a school system and enable us to accomplish our mission are: continuous improvement of students, teachers, staff, and administrators; enthusiasm for teaching and learning; collaboration in teaching and learning; the role of the school committee is threefold: to write policy; to approve an operating budget; to hire the superintendent and support her in carrying out her initiatives for the district." Introduction to new administrators? Oh, excuse me, public comment. Jump board there. Thank you. Two minutes, and if you can state your name, please, we'd appreciate that.
Patricia Oshman from Falmouth, and I am a alumni, proud parent from the Waldorf, and that's a school that's always gonna be my kid's heart. So I'm very glad of this committee taking initiative to giving an opportunity. And it was beyond my expectations how much my children had grown in that school. So want to put a nice word for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Introduction of new administrators? Any other public comment? I'm gonna get the introduction of new administrators. I am working towards that goal.
I'm very excited to introduce our new administrators. I was not putting that off. I just wanted... So I'd like to first introduce Sarah Floyd. Would you like to kind of... Hello, Sarah. Sarah is a graduate of Falmouth High School. She is a resident in Falmouth. She has teaching and administrative experience in the Morris Pond Committee overwhelmingly recommending Sarah for the position, and we're very excited. We think she's gonna be a really nice fit for Morris Pond and for the district. Sarah Floyd.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to introduce Lori Andrade, although I don't think she really needs an introduction. Hi, Lori.
Hi.
She's been in the district for many years, and she actually is... Her last position, she does have a master in education in reading, and her last position was as a reading specialist. She has held many positions over the years. Also, she held the literacy manager stipend position that we've had for the last two years in the district. And so when we were able to, it was always the goal to move that literacy management position to a position, half-time, hopefully full-time at some point, but at least we were able to start at a half-time position this year. And the other half of her position is the AP at East. And she's been a teacher at East for a long time. So we're very happy to have Lori in this position. So she brings lots of experience to both positions, of course, and just the knowledge of Falmouth itself and the culture of Falmouth. So we're very happy to have her.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Ann Barnes. Again, I don't think we really have any introductions for Ann. She's been in the district quite some time as well, in varied positions. Most recently, her role was for the out-of-district positions for our students with disabilities. She is going to continue in that role, but she's also picking up the school-based administrator position at East. And so she will work as the SEVA and work with our special education educators and help address the needs of our children at East. And so we're glad that things are shifting. She's now the Assistant Director of Student Services. Special Ed, sorry, that's Special Ed. I'll get it. We changed that. But anyway, welcome, Ann. We're glad you're in the new role, too. It's great to have people within the district and to bring in new people to the district. That always makes a nice fit. So thank you to all three of you.
Thank you. It's great to have people on board. It's great to put faces and positions together. Good luck. Have a great year, and I'm sure you will. Waldorf, please. Presentation.
You should introduce yourselves anyways. I'll begin. My name's Clayton Jones. I am the fourth resident of the Waldorf Association of Cape Cod at the School of Cape Cod. I, too, am a graduate of Falmouth High School. Not put the year on that. Presently, I guess we'll go through kind of the overview of Waldorf, and then we'll talk about the checklist that you have put together, that sort of thing. I presently run, I am the Senior Director of Technology at a place called Teledyne Marine, so I'm here in Falmouth. I've lived here my entire life, born in a hospital a little bit. So we have...
I'm Roxanne King, the Director of the School.
And I'm Emily Holbrun. I take care of the business side of things.
David Gable. I've been a teacher at the Waldorf School for 31 years now, and I'm currently part-time in teaching music, painting. And if you ever go to the Falmouth Corral Concerts, you know me. And I do academic support with some of the groups of students in the school as well.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Loney. I am a parent, well, former parent, actually. Also, you're still a parent. A member of the Waldorf Board.
So I will just give you a few slides as kind of an overview of Waldorf in general. Waldorf education was developed 100 years ago, I think, on September 19th. I'm not sure if I have that date correct.
Yes.
Okay. So we're coming up on that by Rudolf Steiner. Presently, there are over 1,000 Waldorf Schools in 64 countries and about 1,800 different Waldorf Kindergartens in over 70 countries. So Waldorf associations and teaching training centers are located around the world. So it's just to say that it is an established school, and it's out there, et cetera. We started in Woods Hole 35 years ago as a parent-driven organization, and it has followed on. It went to Bourne, and then it went to Tuit, and presently, we're in Unitarian Universalist Fellowship in Falmouth. They kindly offered their spaces interim for location for the year where we look for a permanent home. And in the curriculum, if you have specific questions, David Gable, 31 years is the best to answer those rather than myself, but the curriculum is kind of, it's a well-rounded one. There's science, observation, critical thinking, math. It's experienced through movement, through manipulative story, pattern, and written computation. Foreign languages are experienced not only through the language, but through culture, song, dance, the history, kind of bringing that whole ball together. And English, history, and social sciences are taught through story, conversation, rich collection of historical study and classic works. So think of it as a very well-rounded type of education. The other attributes which some kids like, you know, there's pluses and minuses, but reduced homework, so children can really focus on instead contributing to their home life. And it's encouraged that the parents bring the lessons of the school and bring them into the after-school portion. So it's a different sort of homework, per se, than what we're usually typically used to. Arts, music, and theater. So exercising the brain in kind of multitasking multiple directions, including the Math and Sciences. Gardening program, healthy food. The children grow their own food. It is then prepared by them and eaten by them. There's a chef on staff who's amazing. I know my children in particular would have never touched any of this stuff, but they love Chef Pete, and he brings that to them, that, you know, the foods that kind of, they would look like that at. And it's an enriching kind of education that goes full circle. Outdoor time and plenty of movement. There's a real belief in getting outside and exercising, then learning, exercising, learning, and bringing that through at the same play. Low tech and avoidance of overstimulation in media. So, you know, there's a whole social side to that. It's more of that, again, that activity and brain-hand movement that drive the education here. And I left you with this. It's an interesting article. If you want to go look it up, it's, in fact, it's Joseph Hartman is the dean at engineering at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, and it is a skeptical engineer on why he believes in Waldorf. So he went through his learning process of, yeah, it's kind of good for kindergarten into, hey, they're really doing something interesting here. So I understand it's a little bit of an alternative, but we're here. We brought to you this... I know you had to create a checklist, but I think it was a surprise maybe to the school that you have the purview of overseeing private schools in your district. It certainly was a surprise to the Sandwich School District also. And we went through that learning curve when we almost acquired 40-acre property in Sandwich. That unfortunately fell through because there's an agricultural overlay, and surprisingly, schools are not allowed in an agricultural overlay district. So that didn't work out. But so we've kind of been through this process somewhat, and I, you know, we're here to learn with you on that and hope to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Any comments?
So we were able to review all the documents that you sent. We do have some questions around curriculum assessment. If I can turn that over to Sonia Tellier. She's our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
I'm gonna turn it over to David very quickly.
Through line.
Would you, David, I think, because this is televised...
Oh, they want me up there?
I think you need to be up there.
Yes, we do.
First, I want to thank you for all of the material that you were able to submit.
Sure.
You know, we've taken time to go through. I just have a couple of questions just to help me understand. One around the math skills, the math skill goals that you submitted. As I was trying to go through there, and I'm trying to make some parallels to the way that the standards, because there's language about having something comparable, I just had a question about the way that Massachusetts frames the mathematical standards of mathematical practice. So you were talking a little bit about manipulatives and some of the other tools that you use in instruction. Can you tell us a little bit more about how you go beyond some of the skills, the numeracy, the counting skills that you have in the earlier classes, class one, class two, and start to transition that into more applied math, just so we can understand that? It just didn't come out of the document form.
So in the younger grades, there's a lot of work with patterns, skip counting, the quality of number, odds, evens, you know, those kinds of things. They are typically experienced in a variety of ways. Frequently, a teacher will bring a concept via a story. It might be a scenario in which there are two families with an odd number, and when they get together, everybody has a partner, or something of that nature. A lot of the material is teacher-generated, especially in the younger grades. When it comes to then translating the imagery to number, there's a lot of work with manipulatives, stones, acorns, whatever it might be. I did an exercise with some sixth graders the other day in ratios. We went out and gathered twigs and divvied them up and saw that, you know, this ratio and that ratio were actually the equivalent of one another. Then, in the younger grades especially, you spend a lot of time with that, but then you start recording what you just did. So if you've got five objects here and four objects here, and you combine them, then the record of that becomes the equation, so that they experience the equation concretely. And that's the bridge then to the more abstract mathematics.
Thank you. I'm gonna move away from, I just have two other questions that I wanted to touch upon. So I'm gonna move away from math. So again, very similarly, you presented the skills for English, for ELA. And as I was reviewing those and looking at that, I had questions about how you transition students towards analysis and some literary analysis. I understand the story part of it, and I think that was captured in one of the slides that you just presented to us. How do you start to have students make meaning on their own or do analysis of the story and make connections interdisciplinary even?
Through discussion. So it's very common for a class to read a book. All the children typically have an independent reading book. That's their book that they read. When they finish something and they need something to do, they pull out their independent book. But then the class will have a book that they read. And then those points can be brought out in the discussion. A chapter is read, it's discussed, then we look at, and the teacher will ask sort of leading questions and to, you know, to bring them to ideas such as, what's the difference between plot and theme? Where are there things in this part of the book that say they are one thing but are actually something else? And so on and so forth. So that's really the crux of it. It's through the discussion, and the teacher sometimes giving them some to work with, and then having them look for their own.
Great, thank you. My last question just circles back to the Massachusetts framework for digital literacy and computer science and just having a sense. So I understand that in the scope and sequence that you offered for Criterion III, you talked about science and technology. Can you clarify for us more specifically what the goals, and I saw the piece that you presented to, I'm sorry, I don't mean to point at you. Clayton, that you had presented about stimulants and the view through Waldorf of media, but if you could just clarify for us if that's the only way you do technology, or if there are, in fact, other ways that might not have come out through the documents?
Frequently, the eighth-grade students, sometimes seventh grade, will do some work with computers at school. We usually take our middle school students through a, how can I describe it? How to assess online material, how to look for information that is unbiased, that is safe, if you will. And we try to give them strategies for finding that information when they do that on their own. Keyboarding skills, we don't teach them, but most of the students learn them. They learn them by osmosis, I think. I know my own kids did. And my mother was a typing teacher, so I learned the old, you know, blind, five-finger typing, touch typing.
I was taught typing in Falmouth High School. I think, as David's saying, we recognize that technology is part of our environment and surroundings, so we not only hope, you know, discussion about that at the student level, but it's also at the parental level of how do, as parents, you know, it's come to me, how do you present this to your child and safe exposure and that sort of thing? So it's not limiting, eliminating stimulation. It's kind of saying, let's not make it your life focus.
What we really want to see with our students is that they learn how to interact with other students and how to interact with their families. And so having less technology leaves room for them to develop those human relationships. And they learn those skills actually pretty rattly. I had, you know, my two youngest children went to the Waldorf School from nursery through the eighth grade, then they went to high school, public high school. They were at Sturgis. And so they didn't have cellphone, cellphone or a laptop until they went to high school. They picked it up like that. And my son is now an engineer. My daughter just graduated from Bassard, so they did okay.
I tried telling my daughter, who wants a phone, by the way, already, that I didn't get a phone until I was, you know, in my 30s. And it took her a while to figure out, because I had also told her previously that we didn't have phones back then. Got on to that pretty quickly.
Did they have dials on the phones when you were a kid?
If you got it wrong, you'd have to, yeah.
I'm very appreciative. Thank you so much for sharing that. I appreciate it.
Derek?
I was just wondering, I'm a French and German teacher, so I just am curious about your world language activities.
We have had French typically.
And a bit of Spanish. Presently, we have a teacher who speaks, who teaches German, French, and Spanish.
But he's only doing French right now.
So how do, it's interesting, you have song and dance, and that's great. I mean...
In the younger grades, I mean, we even had it in the kindergarten for a period of years. Finger plays, rhymes, learning the names of colors, teacher giving instructions in French, but then modeling, so that the children don't hear French and then hear an English translation so much as they hear French and see what the teacher's asking them to do. Then, as they grow, they do learn to read and write, but that follows a bit behind those skills in English, obviously. Grammar comes in. I was always, as, you know, a main lesson teacher, teaching English, very appreciative of the French teacher's teaching of French grammar, because I strongly believe that learning grammar in two languages, it supports, they support each other.
Yeah, and I always tell people grammar's important, but it's more important that you can talk, because they're not gonna boot you out of Paris if you can't conjugate a verb, you know? Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Megan?
So I was curious if you had a health curriculum. I think, you know, we've spent a lot of the past decade really trying to help our young people, especially fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. Those are the ages where they have a lot of self-awareness and learning about their bodies and just curious...
It's not a health curriculum that is designated as a health curriculum. It comes through other parts of the program. Of course, in grades six, seven, and eight, we have human physiology blocks. So there's a lot of discussion in nutrition. We always bring human reproduction and STDs and substance abuse conversation to our eighth graders. Different teachers have different ways of doing that. And the way each teacher brings those topics depends very much on their understanding of the children that are in that class. So, you know, I've taught eighth grade three times now and done those topics three different ways, depending on who was there and what they, I felt they needed to experience.
Thank you.
John?
Just a couple of questions. One item, just as a comment, is that, you know, we're looking and analyzing, you know, whether to offer our consent or approval, but as my understanding, you folks are already operating. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, we refer that to two attorneys and a federal court judge who's now retired to ask the specific question. Are we in any violation of state or local laws in starting up the school while we're in this process? And the answer was no.
Gotcha.
So we did our due diligence there.
And then as far as the scenario where you would have an impact, if you will, on Falmouth is if, one scenario I can see is if you had, if we needed to help with special ed, professional development, and we'd be welcome to do so. And just wanted to ask you, is that a component of what you have at the school?
There have been times when students have received support services through their town. Of course, our students come not just from Falmouth, they come from all around. I don't think, I think we don't have anyone right now that falls into that category.
Because that would put it in the thing of, any of the federal funds would be, we would, of course, work with you on that. And then the other question I had, and the, as far as, and apologies if it seems like an awkward question, but it's something that I do need to ask. In Barnstable, you had a challenge, and our colleagues in Barnstable actually voted unanimously not to renew your lease. You had some financial challenges for a couple of years. What has changed from then to now that make you think you're viable?
That's a very good question. You have a new administrative staff that's been put in place that I believe the, without going into too many details, they had lapsed on their rightsizing of the school and to keep a balanced budget. So that has been, there's a strategic overlay of both rightsizing for the student population that you have, keeping a balanced budget. We've had other initiatives about fundraising, et cetera, et cetera. But that has been put into place, and the debt has been resolved, and we have completely resolved our issues with the town of Barnstable. It's fully paid up. All the debt is gone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
You had mentioned in the presentation that this was an interim location. Can you tell me more about what the long-term plans look like? Are they in Falmouth?
They may well be in Falmouth, but we have been looking at properties in Sandwich, Falmouth, Bourne, Gatamet, I mean, part of Bourne also, but in the surrounding areas for a suitable property to bring the school to. So I think that is one of the issues that the school has had in the past, is renting spaces and not investing in their own property and space. So it is one of the strategic initiatives also.
So the interim space could be interim for quite some time then?
My, right now, the interim space is for a year. That is what the lease is written. And whether that continues beyond that or not, I... And whether that continues beyond that or not, I do not know, but we are actively searching for a permanent solution. Thank you.
Kelly?
So I have a couple of questions on the checklist for the things that, under physical plant and safety, some of the things that either are marked NA or not checked off. An elevator, as it seems, because there's no elevator in the building. So that one's fine. But I'm wondering about the lead paint poisoning because there's young children there.
That's a perfectly good question. Lead paint was taken off the market in 1975. That doesn't mean that there wasn't still some available. The church was built, I believe, in 1995.
Oh, okay.
So it is far beyond when lead paint would have been used at that facility. So if not asked for any lead paint testing, you're usually absolved from doing that if your building is built post that period.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you. And then, then the other ones about like the safety inspection, the safety and health certificates, those weren't checked, so I'm wondering if they're pending or if they're.
Yeah, we just actually received the Board of Health our certificate, so we can forward that to you.
Okay. The health inspection, is that what you just got?
The Board of Health, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So even though it's a church, because there's a different usage here, we've had, you know, the Board of Health and the fire department, you know, the building inspector, had that whole group sign off on this as a use of the school and architect overlay of number of students per room and egress and sprinkler systems and all of the things that you need to do, obviously, for the health and safety of the healthcare.
Thanks.
I have some concerns. Kelly and I visited the school, I think it was your first day in operation, I think it was September 5th. I guess you had 30-some kids involved, and I think that was excellent. I think the building obviously meets any kind of codes or any circumstances. But a couple of things that concern me in regards to safety. And being a former principal, I really think safety for kids is really extremely important and needs not to be overlooked. We walked right in, concerning to me, that we weren't buzzed in, we weren't checked in. There was no sign-in. I think you should know who comes into your school. I think signatures are very important. Time allocations on those sign-ins are, to me, extremely important. I'm not sure if there's cameras or anything of that nature because obviously you're utilizing this through the Unitarian Church, I understand that. There were students both in and outside, doors open, another concern of mine. If you're out, door closes. You come back in, you have a code to get in. You're not outside and the doors open, or the doors are open when all the kids are inside. I think that needs to be monitored, looked at, and evaluated. And I think through the church and your school, you need to do those things. The other thing that is concerning, especially in today's world, is that you're pairing up with churchgoers on a daily basis. People who come in and out of that establishment as members of the congregation. And you have, obviously, a school there. The interaction between adults and kids. I don't know how you get around that. But, and I know the church people are there, we were told that. Stationed every day. But again, we have an interaction there that could lead to some concerns. And I want to bring those things to your attention because that's one, there's several things that I thought about immediately. I don't know, excuse me, I don't know how you address that. I'm sure you're working very closely with the church organization, their directors. But I think those are some food for thought. And again, it refers to the safety of your organization, the safety of your children and your staff. And in today's world, whether we like it or not, we have to be, I think, overprotective in many instances when it comes to school and children's security. I needed to bring that up.
Fair enough. Some of those, I think, are in lotion. We've taken action items on those. There are double sets of doors.
Yes, there are.
They're open during the time when the students are brought in, but there are, you know, what we've worked with the churches locking those inner doors, and we have an attendant there to open those doors for anybody coming in. And we are in the process of setting up a sign-in log for those that are not already known and core-checked.
Okay.
So, you know, there is a part where the congregation comes in, we have aides or assistants there, they go, oh yes, this is such and such. So we're relying on their knowledge of that person coming in. But if there are other groups coming in and they're segregated into just that main room, as opposed to often the rooms where the students are. I do understand your concern about the doors in and out of the rest of the building. It's something we're trying to address, but they're not, they're not magnetic lock doors to buzz people in and out.
Okay.
And that is more difficult, and I understand your concern there on the backside of the building.
Okay.
It's not that we haven't thought about them, it's maybe that we haven't completely got this all together.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was just going to make an add-on. Even just those, replacing the lock on those doors with one of the keypad actions.
Yep.
You know, something that simple.
Understood.
So we're still waiting a certificate, correct? To complete, to complete everything from the Board of Health. So then.
We do have it here.
Would the committee accept that?
That was the only item missing?
I think that would be the only item missing then.
I guess we need to leave the place satisfied to answer the questions and the questions.
Okay, with that.
I mean, I am a little uncomfortable with putting our staff on the spot to try and evaluate things in the moment. But if I'm in the minority on that, I'm fine with that too, I just.
Is that certificate the last piece of the puzzle for this application?
Yes, it is.
I think that is.
With their explanation of everything else.
Are you comfortable? I mean, we had some genuine safety issues.
Yes, we did.
Or we, you know, I don't know how to proceed on that.
Yeah. I think if you're working on.
Those are action items, and to be fair, they are on, for us. We moved in in very short order, so we are catching up, but they are certainly on our list of things to address.
Any other questions for Mike here?
Derek?
Is there anything wrong with tabling this until we have in writing the safety action steps?
No.
I mean.
No, that would, that would be perfectly fine. I have no problem with that.
I don't doubt it, but I mean, we don't have any record other than conversation, so, I mean. Tabling doesn't mean not voting, it just means getting those things. I like to see those things in writing, those safety things that you mentioned.
And I think.
Because it was three of them, it wasn't just one, so.
Okay.
Am I allowed to say that, or do we have a motion, or am I allowed to talk about it? I don't know.
We're still in discussion.
Okay.
John?
My understanding is if we table it, we don't necessarily, we've tabled in the past without having a motion. We just tabled it. And then I would, I would add that it's, it wouldn't adversely impact you, since you are operating already.
That's right, yes. Kelly?
Our policy states that we need a recommendation from our superintendent. And I just think it's unfair to ask for that on the fly because it's kind of an important decision, and we did collect a lot of information tonight. But, so I would favor Terry's idea to just table it until our next meeting, when we have everything in front of us, and like you said, it's not impacting you at all. So just to allow us to follow the policy that we've already taken the time to create and cross our Ts.
If we are going to table it and we're going to have in hand the Board of Health's safety inspection, I know that we took a leap of faith without documentation from Waldorf or the fire inspector. I know that you have one now, so I would also like that in hand when we do.
Believe me, we have that here also.
And maybe that will also state the year of the building's construction, and then we can check off the lead thing as well, because we'll have documentation about the year of the building.
The plans themselves do that, and the building inspector has the set of plans, but we can submit.
We can do a property record or a property.
I would think it'd be an easy thing.
That would be sufficient, yes, yes.
You can actually look up. Occupancy permit, which is like the fire, it's in that. So the components of the fire inspection all come under the occupancy permit. The occupancy permit is the overarching certificate for all of that.
It's just on our criteria.
Has it suffered?
So we would like to have it.
That'd be great.
I think with a few things coming in now and the safety concerns, I believe we can table this. Obviously, you've checked with attorneys in the state, so you are progressing as normal. And I think with the facts in front of us, it'll be easier for our recommendation from the superintendent, our administrative staff, and then we can move on that. So I think tabling would be a good thing tonight.
Oh, I think it's very understandable.
Melissa?
While we have the time, while, until the next time we vote on this or when we do vote on this, perhaps some of the other safety concerns could be ironed out during that time as well.
Well, I think that's, that's the recommendation.
Yeah.
Great.
Do we need a motion to table, or we can just table it?
We can just table it.
It'll be tabled then. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your efforts with kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you want to have it in your calendar, our next meeting is the 24th.
24th, yeah.
I'd like to thank everybody for their input, their Q and A, because it's obviously something a little bit different that we've never had really any association with. And again, we're looking at how we follow the state standards in order to do this. So there's a few things that need to be done, and we'll proceed from there, but thank you. I appreciate that, all the efforts from everybody tonight. Okay, we're going to act on, I guess it's service trust?
Yes, so the Falmouth Public Schools will receive a gift for the amount of $170,000 for student scholarships from the estate of Mr. Walter Service if the committee so approves to accept. Mr. Service was a graduate of Falmouth Public School. At the time, it was Lawrence High School, and he's a longtime resident of Falmouth. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Service publicly for his extraordinary generosity to the Falmouth Public Schools.
That's amazing.
That's fantastic.
As a Falmouth, former Lawrence High School person, I'd like to make the motion to accept it.
Is there a second? Okay, John seconded, any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
That is a lot of money. So how does that get managed? I mean, that is incredible.
We do have a scholarship committee, and so they will, and they do this with many trusts and scholarships and monies that come in. So it'll just be one more that they manage along with the others, but, and they have the procedures in place to do so.
That's fantastic.
Wow.
And so that will be on going for multiple years?
Yes.
Then?
Yes, yes. Just confirmed that that will be ongoing.
Very lucky.
It's amazing.
That is fantastic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered, goes through. Information on core value survey?
I wanted to take this opportunity to just share publicly that the school committee has decided to, as one of their goals this year, is to address our mission, vision, and core values. And so in order to support the school committee, the administrative team and principals at the schools will be offering at open house at all of our schools an opportunity for parents to actually share what their core values are. We'll have a list, and they can kind of, let them just kind of select those that are the most important to them, or all. And then in addition, so that'll be at the open houses, it'll be a time to interact. And we will also have a survey ready, it's just about ready to go out now. And we'll have a survey for all families, for all teachers and for all students. And the teachers and students will be given time during the school day to take the very brief five-minute survey. But we'll give the school committee feedback on the values that are most important, so the school committee can then take it to the next step of writing core value statements and drafting a mission and vision statement that later in the school year, we will have focus groups to be able to get feedback. And our, the school committee's goal then at that point would be in April to have the revised mission and vision statement and core value statements for the district. So it's very exciting to be a part of this work. I'm very happy to be a part of the school committee to take this on this year.
Thank you. Any comments?
I have a comment, I just wanted to really put in another word for Doug. School inspires me to come to school every day and learn.
It's a good mission.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Update on enrollment and class size? Lights out.
So last September, I presented enrollment classes, and I just want to give an update. I'll continue to do this, plan to do this each September. So we will look at enrollment first, our enrollment numbers as of last Friday. It's 3,320 students. This is down slightly from the year, the previous year, it's down by 85 students. By school, you can see the enrollment, the high school is actually up by a few students. We are up in pre-K, and the others are kind of just shaking out, you know, here and there. We did move our pre-K to East, so the numbers are up in East. The numbers are down in T-ticket over last year because the pre-K moved. Next slide. We are up one, oh, I'm sorry. So the enrollment by grade, you can see the grade comparisons at the high school. I would like to say that three out of the four grades at the high school is up. So that's exciting, and again, the preschool is up. Our school choice growth, seven years of growth we're showing now. We're up another 12 students this year to add to our school choice numbers. Continues to grow, we're pleased with that. Moving into class size. You can see our class size enrollment at the elementary is seven, the average being 17 to 18.5, and at the fifth and sixth, it's 23. At the comparison for last year, everything remains exactly the same on the averages, except third and fourth just switched. So it was 18 to 18.5 and 18 to 18.5. So I'm pretty much holding steady, and this was pretty close to the year before as well. I'd like to just share a little bit about the demographics. You can see that there is very little shift or movement when we're looking at the percentages. This could be a movement of one student, but we are pretty much holding this year over last year. The next slide, our English language learners, up slightly, 3.4 to 4%. Our student with disabilities, slightly up a percentage. Two things here, I think, that would add to that is our preschool students with disabilities is up. is up, and we lowered our 80 by 85 students. And so I think that that would actually make up for the difference between last year's percentage and this year's percentage. And our economic disadvantage, now, let me, I'd like to explain this one just a bit. It is up slightly. We do, we will not have our economically disadvantaged numbers until October. So this is the end of the year, school year. So you can see it grew slightly over last school year. And so we'll know more about this year in October on that. I would like to share a little bit back about our families that register in the schools as a language other than English as their first language. We have 223 families registered. Only slightly over half, 130 students, actually received services. The 223 languages reported, that constitutes 29 different languages. 107 of the students report as Portuguese being their first language. The second largest reported is Spanish at 27 students. Vietnamese is at 11. And we have Chinese, Creole, other, and Russian all reported at 10. And then the other languages are in the single digits. We, the students, let's see, 79 of the 107 students are receiving services of the students as Portuguese. 12 of the 27 are Spanish, and the rest, the 15 languages are in the single digits. I really wanted to share this and just report that we do have a varied, diverse segment of our population, and it's just something to celebrate. And I just was excited to share that. And I think it's to say we have 29 languages represented says a lot about our area and how we welcome students. And that, unless you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Megan?
I had a question about the out-of-district placements. Just curious if you see a pattern in a certain grade, or has it gone down in the last few years?
Just over, you know, across like a five-year trend. Yes. It's gone down. And with every year, we'll see some variability based on our student population. I don't think that there's a particular trend or pattern for grade level. It's just, you know, more of the individual needs. I would say this past year, while we continue to build our programming through all of our community partners with McLean and help with things that are stuffed in.
Yes, absolutely.
Our partnerships with McLean and some of the other work that we're doing, but the, you know, the slight increase are the placements that happened throughout last year tended to be more supporting the significant needs of children and social promotion.
Thank you.
So the 30, the 38 students is up two students over last year, but the previous year it was 47. So it absolutely has been coming, you know, came down, and then we've kind of helped study. I do give a lot of credit to Dr. Woodward and her team and what they put in place for students that actually help our students be successful within the district.
Andrea?
I was wondering if you could give a reminder on the number of school choice openings that we, that we have, not currently, that we opened for the year, because I'm trying to put that in perspective with the 85 less students this year and how many, what proportion we're opening up.
Were you looking for grade?
For our, our, the total seats?
Yes.
So we had six seats at every grade level, except for the high school where we were open. I believe we set it at 12, and then we, we were not taking in the seniors.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Does that answer? Is it not?
Not all of those seats were filled, obviously, with the number of students. So we, there was no need for a lottery at any of the grade levels. And so there are, there are open seats.
And that school choice, and the school choice number is higher than last year, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes, it's 12 more over last year.
Comments? Any other comments or questions? I'll just throw one thing in, and I've brought it up for the last two years, and I know it will not be passed, but I would love to see Falmouth School District incorporate seniors incoming to this school district. I don't see any problem with that. I've been on my soapbox before, because I think you come in with a transcript. Obviously, it's pretty easy to read a transcript from a former educator and guidance counselor. And I think you can mirror a very good curriculum here to meet the needs of those students. Just a comment, I know it doesn't fly very far, but I have to make that comment every year. Thank you.
I gotta go my opposing soapbox. Because I do think the kids in socially getting into the, by the time they get to the school year, the school year ends so quickly, then you're really having a kid come into Falmouth, and there's really just a few months really that they're really into anything. So is that really a Falmouth high graduate? That's my question.
Appreciate all comments. Melissa, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do we have seniors banging down the door, or do they just not try because it's not on our website? Like we've not accepted. How would we know? Just playing devil's advocate for both of you. How would we know that we've had eight seniors trying to bang down the door to get into the best school systems?
So we have not received last year nor this year an application for senior. I don't know if that, I don't know the reason for that, right? It could be because, because we announced that we don't. Although, you know, we get some applications for, we have, you know, applications for students of age, and that's listed too. So I don't know. I mean, you know.
Sure.
It may create an interesting question, though, of if there are districts that do accept the seniors, how many does it happen? Or is it just people saying, I'm not going to do it at the senior level?
So we can definitely actually look at that data if you want to.
I'd just be curious to see with that number. Remember, we're quell the concerned.
Till next year. And then John will come back at me, so we'll run the safe page. Any other comments on that? Okay, we'll move forward. Update on safety?
I'll make three comments on this. One, I'd like to thank the Falmouth Police Department for helping work with the athletic director, the school principal, on creating sort of a logistics plan for the new field that kept, hopefully will continue to keep everybody safe and traffic patterns flowing correctly. It's a different take for everybody. The police department's actually very happy with the ability to sort of secure that area as compared to the old Fuller Field. So it's just funny to see things from the police department's perspective. They were like, bro. Secondly, we've been talking a lot about video security systems and Bob systems or entrance systems at all our schools and standardizing on those, leading that work. Work should be done over the next two months. And today, the vendor of the entrance system and Bob system, which corresponds to how the police department also has a Bob system for their building, they interact, they coordinated, they coordinated on items so that the police will have access to the schools using the Bob systems also. So that work is being done.
That's awesome.
We already know about the formation of a video system, too. And then third, I'd like to thank the, I believe it was 11 staff members who voluntarily attended the Alice, the formal Alice training that's offered at Cape Cod Community College in July. It's basically every July that they have a group of educators, business people, anybody who signs up with it, of course. But we had an additional 11 train, get themselves trained on that. So that process is continued. And it just, that just goes towards our efforts of trying to make sure that all of our staff feel comfortable in our schools and understand what to do in case of emergencies.
Is the Alice training operated at the college just for educators, or is it for anyone in the public?
No, when I attended, it was, you pay for it, it's a formal program. The business community was well represented, so people from the staffs and things like that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Kelly?
So related to the safety at the, at the field, and everyone figuring out like the new flow for how it's all going to be, and it was a debacle the first week, like people were parked all over the place, couldn't even drive down the street to the field. And then signs went up from the police department, and it was perfect yesterday. So clearly, you know.
There's another meeting happening to learn the lessons and try to improve things.
But it's even, you can tell that it's a work in progress, and it's already, you know, so much better than even just the first week. So I'm glad that that's, it seems to be going really well, so thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, review and act on budget development flow chart?
So this flow chart, everybody have some flow chart in their chart?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed and I worked hard on this, and so if any mistakes are mine, please. This looks exactly like it earlier. So if there's, and the budget subcommittee time was changed to 5:30, if you all feel you need to change that, that's fine too. But this is, the dates are within a day or two of last year. So it's the same process, and we've been having a drama-free budget process, and that's what we, and I think this calendar contributes to that.
Questions? Kelly?
So thank you for the time, which I think that's going to be, at least, well, you know, it's not all about me, but it does really help me, so thank you. And I just have one quick question on number five. So the principals' meeting with their school community is October to November, but then they're submitting their budgets. Are they, is it such that they'll have time? Do we think they'll have enough time to meet with their communities and, I just want to make sure that we're not backing them into a corner?
A motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the budget development flow chart.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move forward. First read, section B on FPS policy manual.
I just want to say how impressed I am with the school committee, subcommittee of the policy. We have four very dedicated school committee members that have given a lot of time over the past year. It's been exciting to work with everyone, just because of me being new and being able to go through every single policy and have the opportunity to be able to discuss not only with my staff, but with the school committee members on just, you know, the intent of policy, why it's there, how it came about in Falmouth. And so it's been a huge help to me. Sonya, I'll give her a huge shout out in her organization skills and keeping us going, and just her willingness to just understand the policy, dig in, and also her history. She actually, last year, took some professional development, joined a, you know, group to understand policy better, and I think that certainly has helped us. So thanks, Sonya, for that. And I'm going to let her, she organized how this is going to be. What we were hoping to do is to have a standardized overall document for you. So each time, these will be the categories, but I'm going to let her go through a little. We are starting with section B, and we will be addressing policy at every single meeting throughout this year. So, Sonya?
I'm going to follow around on that exciting news. So we learned over the course of the process, a better way to systematically document our minutes and capture that. And so this cover letter that we're presenting to you is actually a few hard lessons we learned in trying to keep track of everything that had been changed over the process. So there's a broad statement at the top about just blanket updates that needed to be made, updating pronouns, making sure that as we went through the hundreds of policies, that we refer to the district consistently the same way. So that's what the blanket statement is. So standing policies may have had some of those types of changes, but there's no substantive changes. So the very first section you see here, our policies, we discussed them all, but they have no substantive changes. They're not included in the packet. Then when you go to the next section, that little brief piece there, we divided the rest of the policies, anything that was touched in some way, shape, or form by change, into four categories. So the largest is generally the revised policy category. So you see that presented there. New policies come from the mask model language, the mask policy guidance. And so we've worked with Jim Hardy, who's our master field representative, to determine whether or not we wanted to adopt those, what was the genesis of them, are they tied to regulation? We actually have to have them. We kind of worked our way through that, and whether or not we were willing to work with the mask language, or if we wanted to make subtle changes to that to actually reflect practice in Falmouth, as long as we were in alignment with the regulations. Eliminated policies, in several cases, what you're going to find in this section are items that are more directed at procedures, and there are procedures either developed in the student's family handbook, they could be developed in the employee handbook, or they could be part of the overall procedural manual for the district. And that's something that's going to, I think, be an outgrowth of our work as we move forward. And then finally, policies on hold for continued conversation. This is an exciting section, but there's one there.
So what happened was, as we were going through the sections, we started to give ourselves various homework assignments. Looking at my post-it notes and remembering that we were flagging things all along. So some of those mean meetings with staff within the district, some of it means looking up regulations, some of it means backtracking through, is this a standing practice? Is this something that's been evolving because it needs to change? And then making sure that we capture that accurately when we actually do present a revision to you. So after we go through all of the sections, anything that was down here in the policies on hold for continued conversation will be presented as a final packet at the end of the review process. So that's just the structure.
Questions?
I just want to follow up from Dr. Collier, and thank you for the explanation. So you'll get one section, or two sections, or maybe three sections, depending on the size each year. Just want to set up how we still, you'll get the first read, during the second read. If you come back and have any questions, the policy subcommittee can answer the questions. And then the following meeting, it will be on the agenda to approve in form, but we are going to, and that'll just be the process throughout the year. At the end of reviewing this, which is actually in May, we will have a, overall, you will approve the entire manual, policy manual as one. So we'll have a policy manual with one date to start out with. There will be revisions, and that'll change over the years, but at least this year. So that's what that should, should look like for everybody as a process. Okay.
Terry?
And if you have any questions along the way, will you get ahold of us so that we can hopefully, and do your homework and read them, so that we can knock them off month by, or meeting by meeting? And I am so excited that we're going to have, at one point, for one day, an update to the whole policy man in the history of mankind. I don't think.
So then for this, for if you have comments or discussion points on these, would you direct them to the policy committee?
That was my question, too. What's the process?
I don't feel, thank you.
Yeah, I had some, too, so I wasn't sure what the process is for.
It would be helpful.
If you have any questions, you can. It is the first read, but the, so the next meeting is actually set up for that, at your second read.
And we appreciate you reading them and having questions.
So the second, can I go?
Go ahead.
So the second read would be when we, because that'll put the, won't that, I don't want to put policy, the policy subcommittee, who's already clearly, like, taking off. the policy subcommittee who's already clearly, like, taking on the world to get this done. I wanna make sure they have enough time to figure out...
Kelly, what do you say when you and I do a cannonball in and just say a few things?
Okay, let's do that. You wanna go first?
Okay, I'll go first. So BA, in BA, this is more of just like a subtlety thing of a verbiage, in the first line there, the first full sentence, where it says, "The committee and its, each of its members must look to the future and the needs of all people, more than the average citizen finds necessary." I just think of it as saying, "may find necessary," it just sounds a little bit better. I mean, 'cause then we're saying the average citizen doesn't, you know, we're somehow looking down on the average citizens, as opposed to saying, "They may not find it necessary, the type of level that we take it to." That's just one comment on that.
Where did you want the "may" to be?
Just the "may," instead of, instead of the, "to the future, the needs of all people, more than the average citizen finds necessary." More than the average citizen may find necessary. I think it sounds kinda condescending to the average citizen. I don't know, this is my thought on that. And then the, and then in BBAA... BBAA...
School committee member authority, that one?
Yeah, that one there is...
Where are you now?
BBAA...
BBAA, school committee members' authority and duties.
Let me see. Why are we striking that, that there, that's, will be settled by an official vote, the committee in formal session? And it could be something you guys could think about as a response, you don't necessarily have the answer. But I just wonder why we're just striking that. Okay, and then...
Do you wanna...
Yeah, I mean, sure, sure, yeah.
So when we started to go through all of these in their entirety, one of the things we found was that some things start to repeat in different policies. So we had conversation about whether or not this is the policy which it belongs, or if it belongs in another, because this entire section's about school committee. So my top of, you know, I'm thinking about this, I'm pretty sure that's why, but I would be happy to, between now and the second read, go back and verify that. But there were a lot of spots where we found that we were just repeating ourselves, and we tried to figure out what's the best place for.
So that might be said somewhere.
Mm, so I'll verify.
And then BBCC?
BBCC, BB...
BB? BB what?
CC? Did you say BB?
BBC.
Actually, I'll go BDB first, I'm sorry. BDB.
BDB.
Oh, officers, sorry.
And I'm gonna break into VA, okay? Three studios. That's a good one. And then, so the BDB, under the secretary duties. So it's actually, it's actually removing, you know, which I think is an important one to note there, of the, you know, the minutes taking and the records notion of the committee, and actually being sort of the arbiter of policy. And then actually changing it, because the secretary, I mean, we've never had it happen, but if the regular Roberts rules... We have had it happen, okay. So I sit correctly?
Because I had to do it one time.
Okay. Because the regular Roberts rules is it would be the vice chair, vice chair, and then if the, if the vice chair is not present, then the secretary would then hold an election. And it could still be elected the secretary anyway, but it would be very similar to what you guys have in the prior thing, in the beginning of Section BD, over BDA, where it says, "In the event both the chairperson and the vice chairperson have ended their terms before office, selection has taken place, the secretary shall call a committee meeting to order and conduct an election of a chairperson pro temporary," and blah blah blah. So basically, in our own verbiage in the prior policy, it says, this is what you do when the chair, the vice chair are present. So you're kinda countering that with that. You know, it could still be the secretary is being voted in, but they would just do a quick election, like they do at the beginning of when the new terms are done. So that's just standard Roberts rules, so those are my other own comments.
Kelly?
For consistency, I like that idea, because it could get really confusing if we do it one way during reorganization, and we do it a different way the rest of the time.
Can we just, I mean, clarify, I mean, BDA is if the chair and vice chair are no longer in the position, and BDB is if both of them are just absent during one meeting.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were right.
Okay. Mine are completely different, the things that I had noticed. One was on, and of course I didn't do it so organized with the things that John did. So I, in the school committee subcommittees... I apologize, I didn't...
Committees. Committees.
Because we don't have the cover sheet.
School committee.
Who's on the standing committee, just give me one second? It's a super simple one, you don't even need to read it. It just says chairman.
BDR.
It just says chairman instead of chairperson, all the other ones say chairperson.
They'll, those are all gonna get, they're automated.
Okay, because in all the other ones it was fixed, it just wasn't in...
All the pronouns, all those.
Okay.
Once we submit it.
But it's good to know, because just in case there was a, we can...
Okay. So then in BEC, under executive session?
BEC, yes, thank you. Good comment.
It strikes that the chair states the purpose for the executive session by stating all the subjects and blah blah blah, and that the, and strikes that the chair replaces it with secretary. So I got really interested in reading about this, because it referred to the law in the very first, in the opening clause imposed by state law. So then, of course, I went to read the law, and it actually says that the law, by law, it has to be the chair. So even though we practice it differently, we shouldn't. So we should at least revisit and double-check that we're not breaking the law in our practice or in our policy on that one.
When the mask coverage have caught that, if it were not, not a law? Yeah, we can check the chain.
So it's in Section 21 of mask general law?
Yes.
These are legal, legal.
If that helps, that you wanna look up? Mask general law, Section 21. Okay, so that. Then on, oh, I see, I did it again, school improvement plans. Sorry. I can just send it. So under, in the section on school improvement plans for the... It says... Yes, success plans. So it's, it has a date in there, of August the 15th, which, one, I wondered if it was sort of procedural to put a date in, because we never know how we're gonna change our schedule, things like that. But also, the school improvement plans require participation from parents and community members, and I'm worried about whether or not we can actually do that, if it's done before school even starts. That's it. And I don't need an answer, I just wanted to bring them up, and y'all can...
Discuss it.
Oh, that's fine, I just don't wanna put anyone on the spot to tell me an answer to it, but...
Yeah, so some of the discussion is the school, the current school committee within the year, so in the spring, because they've lived with the plan a little bit more, so that they would be actually updating and then revising, tweaking the goals for the following year. The new council coming in in the fall then would start with that plan, live with it. And so just shifting a little bit, because it's the, a brand-new school council that's actually reviewing a plan that was actually set by someone else, and they hadn't lived with it. Assuming that your members turn over, right? I mean, that's, you know, which, we hope that many people, you know, participate. And so, and yes, by law, we can do that. So it was actually kinda just aligning it more within the year, that the council's actually living with that plan.
And it's...
Is updating, and then, so just changing the cycle a little bit.
All right.
Okay.
And thank you. I mean, I know that, I feel badly pointing out anything, because I can't even imagine how much work went into this.
Any other comments? So, no comments?
Oh. I just wanted to make note of Ann Barnes' help in our guessing, I mean, she is, she does timelines and... Yeah, she's been a big help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. The gallery walk, student artist.
So, we would like to invite everyone to, to some refreshments in the hallway. There are some student artwork on the table in the hallway, and then we invite you to walk in and out of all of our offices on this floor, so that you can see the artwork that's hanging, including, we have new pieces here as well. And so we hoping to be able to, at least once a year, change out all of our student artwork. So we just wanted to be able to take the moment to celebrate our students, because they're absolutely fabulous. So, take a few minutes for...
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to tell you who I have?
Please.
For me?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Kelly made the motion to act on core values and Megan seconded. And then school committee goals. Kelly made the motion and I think I seconded. Superintendent goals was Kelly. I think I seconded that as well. Act on policy Andrea made the motion Kelly seconded. Sorry. Food service Kelly made the motion Megan seconded. Act on SEIU local Kelly made the motion Terry seconded. Is that it?
I think that's it.
That's all.
And the teaching unit A position, the new position, do you have that one?
Uh, I did not.
I remember I made the motion down.
I remember that too.
Yeah, we did.
Yep. And I seconded.
Teaching position, looking for that.
I thought it was cool.
It is, it's super cool. So if you don't second it, you don't think it's cool? We've got your tab?
No, no. Sometimes you remember things more than others.
Okay.
It's gonna go on forever.
Forever.
Sharon, you all right with that?
Yeah, I'm gonna just photocall.
Okay. Okay. Any other concerns on that? Okay, superintendent's report.
Wait, are we gonna vote on it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, the 21st, yes.
Yep, we made the motion.
We already made the motion.
Sorry.
On favor with the adjustments?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I'm gonna abstain at this point, I was gonna vote for it, but now at this point I'm kinda confused, so quite honestly I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
Which part are you confused about, can I help you somewhere?
No. You wouldn't be able to resolve it, I've been trying to resolve it, so it's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, you asked which part could you help me resolve? And I said there's nothing that you could help me resolve. Thank you though.
Okay. Well, I'm stenching, so we'll move on to superintendent's report.
So we had a great opening of school this year, beginning with the exciting ribbon cutting. A lot of feedback, the teachers were glad to be able to be a part of that. There were many people, you know, secretaries or, you know, TAs or, you know, just several people that said they probably would never have gotten that opportunity to see the field the way it was. So, thank you for everyone that was able to come to the ribbon cutting. It was exciting to put together. And I thought the band was absolutely awesome. They had only really been practicing a little over a week and had a, you know, the routine done to be able to present. And so it was exciting for them, had several students say, you know, to be able to do that. But for Kayla Peard, kind of a little nervous about getting that together and being able, but to show off the new uniforms too was really exciting. It was great to have the, our athletes to show up and help hold the ribbon. That was exciting. So that was all volunteer and so it was nice to see a nice little segment come out. But that was very exciting and I really appreciate everybody, as Patrick had mentioned earlier too. We, you know, owe a debt of gratitude to the town, the police department, the DPW, to Falmouth Rovers, there's just so many people, the advisory committees over the years, but just so many things that so many people really helped to make that happen. And it's just beautiful. Which I do have to add that we don't have to cancel for rain anymore. Friday's night opening football game shows that our Clippers do really well, no matter what the weather is.
It was bad.
So, and that was exciting, that they won on the first game on the field tonight. But back to the opening, then we moved into convocation and since the theme was relationships matter and about collaboration and teamwork and working together. So we had a huge committee that really helped out to put all that together. The, everyone, all staff were on the field. So five, 600 people in the field and organized by our PE teachers. So a big shout out to our PE teachers in Falmouth. They organized that along with Dr. Tullier and Julie Williams-Sinkham. And we had just collaborative games for about an hour on the field. And so they moved through and we got a, so they just really, and I think they actually enjoyed it and appreciated that they had something different to do. And it was kind of a once in a lifetime thing when you get a field this awesome to, you know, to do something different, so that was fun. Then the PD day, I'm gonna let Dr. Tullier say a little bit. We did something different this year that we got a lot of kudos for. And so Dr. Tullier, tell us a little bit about PD day.
We restructured the morning, so it's one of our two full day PD days. And because we don't have the structured or tier dismissal, we got to be a little bit inventive. And everybody had an opportunity, all of our units, our TAs came in for the entire day. And in the morning, everybody got to choose three 50-minute sessions. And the sessions, they, there was a huge range. Some of them were featured on different tools within Google. We had one that had a waitlist for all three sessions on cultural proficiency that was facilitated by Henry St. Julian. We had one on de-escalation that was co-facilitated by Dr. Meg Valdez and Katie Hurt. They had a waitlist the whole time. So it was great to see the range of offerings. And then instead of putting out a course catalog, we had everybody record short videos to introduce themselves as facilitators and then what they were gonna be previewing. And then everybody came in and registered. So we were all at the high school, we were spread up and down the main quarter of the first and second floor. We had extended passing time to help with navigation. But it was, it was a great morning, a lot of really great feedback. And the teacher leadership was phenomenal. We had a team of nearly two dozen educators, they came in, we gave them some additional software, put it on their program, walked them through, set some objectives and goals, and they just took off. And so at some point, if we can share some of them with you, they were just amazing. Thank you for the opportunity.
That's neat.
So then the opening of school with students was smooth in every building. Doing the walk, our team was out doing walkthroughs and just every day, smiling faces, glad to be back and sitting in their seats and really engaged already in all the work. So it was great, good opening. So also wanted to just give a quick update on the go kits. We do have four dates that the high school students will be assembling our buckets for the safety that went along with making sure that we have supplies in every classroom. So you can see the dates and they'll be put together and sent out to the other schools.
Excellent. Excellent.
And so you got the times, you're welcome to stop in and see it all happen because our high school kids are pretty awesome. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, our grade five to 12 Chromebook implementation. And so I just was gonna pass this out.
Is this all different?
No.
Okay, sorry.
So, over the summer, we decided to do something slightly different. We certainly have enough devices per student, we have more devices than we do students. And it really is the next phase of implementation of moving to a one-to-one. And so the first was the updated, the Chromebook Responsible Use document. And so this is updated just to basically share the responsibilities, but also what does it really mean to have a one-to-one device? And so this is one-to-one from grades five through 12 already. Grades seven through 12 have, the ones that have come back signed have already been issued their device. That's gone very smoothly in all the grades. A few things that I, we have, we also created a frequently asked questions document that we've already sent out, grades seven through 12. And I just wanted to point out some things. Number one, our most important piece is the digital citizenship modules so that we are making sure that our students are good consumers of the internet. And so there are modules that are expected for the students to participate in and then, and they have so long to do. So even though we went ahead and gave the devices out, they have so long to get those done. And the schools are actually giving them time to complete those as well. So I think that's an important key when we have any type of devices or digital learning with students. Some of the concerns?
That was, I think what I'm hearing ties into what the gentleman from the Waldorf School said about teaching kids to be safe with their, was saving to think about the source. So that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes, absolutely. So we, our digital citizenship curriculum will be implemented kindergarten through 12th grade. And there, we adopted the common sense modules. They are appropriate at age level, so you can, you know, imagine that it kinda just spirals up. The themes stay the same, but we, you know, get a little bit more savvy with our technology skills and being a good citizen and our digital footprint. So it changes over time. So as we get in, so we needed to make sure that these students actually have kinda filled in the gap some with some of the modules to kinda catch them up with the grade. But eventually, this will be a, you know, step up kind of digital citizenship program. So there have been some concerns about the cost or damage and I just, that was the reason for our frequently asked questions. And I just wanted to assure everyone that we, if the damage to any device is accidental, especially the first time, and probably over time, is gonna be very, very minimal or no cost at all. So the only time that there would be a fee incurred is if we actually have to bring in the parts, right? So we have to order them. But we have so many older devices that have parts and our team are certified. HP allowed to actually work on it, so we don't have to send them out, we don't have to have them done, you know, so we can do it all in-house. So because we have so many parts, it's most likely that there will not be fees incurred. But we did wanna identify that it's not a huge fee. The parents weren't concerned with, you know, actually having to, you know, purchase the device or such. Now, if it's intentional damage, then I think that that's, that's entirely, we want students to be responsible. But accidental damage is gonna incur, probably mostly with cracked screens. I'm assured that we have so many leftover screens that it probably will never be, unless you, we'll never use them all. So probably more what we'll see, hopefully not, but is the chargers, right? Either get lost or, you know, we may need to replace those. And so there may be a fee associated with that if, if we need that. Where the Chromebooks are a very sturdy device and so we're really not worried about the damage or there's no need to get a sleeve, it's not recommended to do that. I mean, they certainly can if it's part of decorating their device. Students, the research is really out there that if the student has a device assigned to them and they'll be assigned whether it's one, two, or three years depending on what grade, grade you're in, that they really take more care about it. And when they can personalize it and make them theirs, they're gonna, they actually take care of the device. So we're actually, the other districts that have implemented similar policies really have very little concern about damage or lost devices. So we feel pretty comfortable about it. I just wanted to, to share if the opt-out is if, if parents have already purchased the device for their students, when their device comes onto our network, it has all the same safeguards as if it was a district issued device. We, there's not additional controls for at home, so we wanna partner with families on what that may look like as far as monitoring or, and we encourage that really, to monitor the use at home. And so working with families on how, how that can happen. How they can be, making sure that the students are actually using what they learn from the digital citizenship models type of thing. So we're excited about it. We are Morse Pond, we are just developing what that plan will look like. The devices are assigned to the students, but as far as taking them home, we, we're still looking at a gradual release and support in that process. That'll look a little bit different.
Yeah, please do.
So I'm excited and terrified and a lot of other things around this project. You know, I think it goes a long way to helping eliminate disparities between our kids who don't have devices at home and them having to then miss their lunch or miss their recess because they're typing something because they don't have access at home. But I'm wondering if there's any way that we can help the, especially those families that don't have devices and don't have internet access potentially at home. I know that there's discounted service for families, but is there any way we can like load that up for them or how to, is there any way to help that? I don't want parents also like running a hotspot so their kid can do their homework and then they get a giant cellphone bill. Because families, you know, if your kid needs it, you're gonna make it happen. Is there a way we can help with that?
So the way we're going, the way we're addressing, so yes, there are reduced costs to services for families. In addition, we've already identified locations throughout Falmouth that is free wifi. It is free wifi for our students that can connect into our, at any of the schools. So from the parking, you know, parking lots, if you're a part of, in your device, you can absolutely connect. But in addition, teachers like, so there's a lot of things you can download, work at home, and then as soon as you get back on the network, it'll upload. So there are things that students can do that you actually don't need. You, you just learn to kinda switch, you can do your research at school, you can do your writing at home. So there's, there's lots of different strategies that the teachers learn on helping all students, so it's, that is less a barrier. But when it is a barrier, there's something to do. We are looking into the, basically their hotspots that students can check out of the library, like you would check out, they can go home, they can be able to connect and then they can put it back in.
That's awesome.
So we're really just, we wanna eliminate every barrier, equity is important. We've said this so many times. We wanna make sure that all students have that same access and opportunities to.
I love that, that makes me so happy.
Are there enough, is there an adequate amount of hotspots for students to take on that we need? I know I can't identify what students don't have internet at home, but I would hate for someone to, "Well, Kelly always gets there before me and I never get it and I just wanna make sure there's enough."
We're absolutely gonna monitor that, we will ensure that there will be enough.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's.
No, I, I do, I think it's great for equity and really, you know, just to, I would actually suggest that we monitor, I mean, we do track each year anyway, but monitor kids' performance that are economically challenged to see, hey, did they go up from this year over this year? I really, literally physically applaud you on this because it's a great program on a number of levels. One of it being actually also like a camaraderie thing too. Everybody, hey, we've got Chromebooks today. I mean, who doesn't, who wouldn't come home happy like that? Hey, well, I'm glad I got it.
I'm a very happy ninth grader.
Do you? All right, well, great. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? I think it's fantastic.
Okay, and I just, one other, I think that we've all been hearing the Strike for Climate
Yes.
campaign that's out there. And I just wanna say that the Strike for Climate is the, is actually aligned to our objectives through our Woodsburg partnership. And so we absolutely wanna advocate and help our students to advocate. So we are actually setting up appropriate activities that our students can engage in during the Friday, the 20th. So once we have that a little bit more firmed up, I'll be sending home a letter to parents that will participate, but we will be participating as schools. Our major concern is making sure that students are always safe and the security issue. So we wanna be a part of whatever may take place on the 20th and 27th rather than reacting. So we'll, if we're, if the students, at the upper grades would like to walk out, we will have a safe place for that, they will not have to. But all grades are looking at what can we do? And especially since we're tying into our objectives about our environment and being more conscious about the environment. And so whether it's a lights out at 11 o'clock for a period of time, discussions or prompts, we talked about that. So there could be many things that we might do or just discussions about what, what it's about. But they'll just, there'll be some activities that we wanna be proactive about with our students.
Teachable moments.
Yes, teachable moments, thank you Bill.
Very good, excellent. Anything else?
I think that'll do it for you.
Okay.
Glad to be in my second year.
Committee, reports from the chair, committee member reports, any reports?
I have one. Last night I was at the affirmative action committee and a member, Sandy Feyman Silva, I think she now is for me. She's proposing at the Springtown meeting to rehire an affirmative action officer. And just in background, that was a position that was held by George Spivey. Anyone in town knows George Spivey. And when he retired, that position was never filled. So she, oh, and also the officer is part-time at school and part-time, part-time with the town. So she would just like to come in and explain the article a little bit more and the reasoning and rationale behind it. So if ever we can put her on the agenda, that'd be great.
Yes, we will definitely get her on the agenda, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing that up. That's fantastic. Any follow-up, any other comments, any other reports?
Any comments?
Yes.
Okay, from Cape Cod Collaborative, I had the chance to attend both the kickoff of the transportation group, which was 180 people, which was pretty impressive. The drivers and the support staff, all folks very engaged. And then also the, both the Wake Point and the Star, which was a separate event, 70 people. And again, engaged and to see what they're being trained on and everything was, was very helpful. And it's a good organization, just on the sheer.
Thank you, anything else? I hope so. Request for follow-up information? Kelly?
I'm wondering if there, if there's gonna, if there is a scheduled final field meeting or if we're gonna get like a post-mortem now that it's done on where we're at for, were we under budget, where we, how did it go, lessons we learned, whatever? Is there anything?
The engineers, CDM's final checklist and checkup, that's in the process. There's some things that still need to get done, so eventually.
Eventually, okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Thanks.
We can provide updates here.
Any subcommittee report? I'm sorry, John?
Yeah, for either a future agenda item or follow-up information of to reassess the $80 parking fee at the high school to see, you know, what we're using those funds for and systematically maybe revisit that to lessen that from 80 to, you know, to not, it has negatively impacted students with their fees.
Thank you, John. Anything else?
I just wanted to take a second stab at the policy thing. If you think of anything before the next meeting you wanna ask, you can send it to me, I'll take it.
Natalie?
No, Megan wants to do it.
Just a quick question that's come up since the start of the school year. Some parents have approached me about the possibility of having some of the paperwork and the documents being electronic, something you can fill in online as opposed to getting all of the paper. I know that there is that fine line with access, making sure everyone can actually have internet service to do that, but is there any way we can look into some of it being online?
On their Chromebook when it comes home? Pre-noted?
How much room do we have?
That's a lot of paper.
Anything else?
I have a couple things. So I couldn't remember slash was half being curious. I looked on the Morse Pond website to see what time school ended on the first day of school. And oddly enough, it wasn't quickly available. And I thought, well, I know what it is, but I thought we should make it easier for parents. Like it should be on for every school on their, the page of when you click, when you're on the Falmouth Public Schools website and you click on a school, it should say start time, end time, half-day, start time, end time. I feel like that's kind of really important information that should be at a glance.
Isn't that in the handbooks?
It might be in the.
But if you're at a new school, you would have it.
Like it should just be, oh my gosh, I forget what time my child is out or I'm picking up my child at another school, whatever. I just, I feel like it should be easier and that we should make it easy for parents and guardians to access that. I also just wanna make, speaking of forms and multiple forms, parents and guardians that are listening, one query for multiple children. You have three kids in the district, you get three queries home, you just need to make out one of them. And that, that will also cover your VIPS query as well. Just, I too was approached by parents texting the first night of school. It's, it gets, you know, you're kind of on autopilot when you're filling out all the forms, so I just wanted to kinda make that clear. And that's it for me.
Okay. Andrea?
I only have this because of something Laurie said about the at-a-glance. Lawrence did send home on that first day a wonderful at-a-glance sheet. And I saw that and I was like, thank you very much, this is perfect. And so I really appreciated having that as a parent.
Anything else?
This one's just the hospital thing, but perhaps at the end of our, like after the report from the chair, we don't really have, I know that we verbally say future agenda, but maybe we could actually add it on the agenda to like request for future agenda items and/or open forum, things that we could open discussion for next school committee meeting or if somebody had an idea about something, just sort of thinking about that. Wondering your thoughts.
Or announcements, which is what I'm waiting patiently to do.
Okay, okay.
Another good one, announcements.
Cause a lot of times we have things that don't fall into.
Right, okay, we can add that. I like the future agenda items, I think announcements would be great.
Can I make my announcement?
Yeah, I'll let you do that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a plug for the Stories of Race on Cape Cod that's being held at St. Barnabas next Thursday. No, maybe it's two Thursdays, the 19th. I don't know what day it is.
19th.
From 6 to 7 and there's a registration link if you Google Stories of Race on Cape Cod. It just sounds like a really interesting exercise in being more culturally aware.
Excellent.
So that ties into one of our PDs that we had at the high school on the opening day. Henry St. Julian had an excellent professional development around diversity. And we, Joannie and I actually attended the first one and it was actually extremely special. And we're actually trying to gather a contingency from our staff to actually attend, so.
Oh, to attend this?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So we're excited to partner with the Woodsburg.
Diversity group, is that what it's called?
Excellent.
Yeah, I recommend it, I would.
I'll leave you with a quote. Quote, "It does not matter how slowly you go, as long as you do not stop." The wise man Confucius, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, yes.
It's just a roll call. I mean, not a.
Roll call, no, it's.